What's that?
Untied.
Commissioner Zuber, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Atcharia appears not to be here. Commissioner Bennett appears not to be here. Commissioner Eganberger?
Here.
To be here.
You appear to be here. Commissioner Engel appears not to be here. Commissioner Graham Hudak?
Evening.
Commissioner Okon?
Here.
Commissioner Perkins?
Here.
Commissioner Zuber is here, and Chairman Green?
Present.
All right.
Okay. And of course, we have our planning staff, Jeff Goulet and Patrick Sloan, and welcome to you all, and welcome to those who will ultimately watch on cable. We last met on January 6th, 2020. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Zuber, and support by Commissioner Okon. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We have one item on the agenda tonight. Anything to add from staff?
Yeah, just at the end of the meeting, we need to have election of officers. That is item three.
All right. So we had that addition to the agenda. Do I hear a motion to accept the amended agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion to accept the amended agenda by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Okon. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. First item tonight was tabled from last month. It's the VA outpatient facility where we're considering a special land use for property which is located east of Lotz Road between Ford and Warren. Since this was tabled, we need to remove that from the table. Do I hear a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second.
Got a pattern going here. We've got a motion to remove the item from the table by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Okon. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Jeff, do you want to refresh us on this project?
Yes. Last month, you held the public hearing on the special land used for a medical facility for the VA outpatient clinic located east of Lotz Road and north of Ford Road. The item was tabled to get more information on traffic impacts, to see what the project sponsor could do, and to answer some other questions. They provided some additional backup in your packet. I'm going to turn it over to them to explain what the outstanding issues were and how they're resolving those. In your packet, you did have a drawing showing a proposed improvement to Lotz Road, which was proposed by their traffic consultant at the last meeting. They have made a commitment to do that improvement. The county, however, may request more improvements than what is shown on, to Lotz Road, than what is shown on this particular drawing. Our traffic consultant feels that the improvement shown on the handout that I gave you is not shown in your packet because the overlay to the aerial didn't come through. But it basically includes a right turn lane on Lotz Road to Ford Road to get eastbound or westbound traffic to 275 moving through there. MDOT has also agreed to look at the timing of the Lotz Road light to add some seconds, green timed seconds to Lotz Road to help clear that intersection a little bit better. So between those two improvements, it should take care of their additional impact to Lotz Road and actually improve the existing condition that's already out there. So they will be improving the level of service to a small degree, but also mitigating their entire impact with this improvement. So I'll turn it over to Mandy Gauss with CESO, or somebody from Johnson Healthcare, whoever wants to get up and address the questions that were outstanding at the last meeting.
Okay. Jeff, since this was a tabled public hearing, do we still need to open the public hearing?
No, you held and closed the public hearing.
I'm sorry?
You opened and closed the public hearing. You took public comments. So you tabled it in order to get information back on the outstanding traffic issues.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir. Welcome.
Good evening. My name's Derek Weaver. I'm with Johnson Healthcare Real Estate, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and talk about our project. As we get started, I'd like to acknowledge not only a number of members of the veteran community here in Canton and the surrounding area, but also some leadership administration from the VA Medical Center in Ann Arbor has graciously attended here with us this evening as well. So thank you all for coming out and showing your support for the project. To follow on from when this matter was tabled previously, we have began engagement with the county as it relates to the road improvements, which were the catalyst for pause at the last meeting. As Jeff Goulet has written, and we have responded to, I'm here to confirm with you tonight, our intent to do these road improvements that I think are ultimately governed by the county. So we will be engaging further with the county on the road improvements. But we otherwise have agreed, I'm here to reaffirm that commitment, to what Jeff has written in his proposal for your commission to consider.
Okay. All right. So as I understand it, so now as part of the special land use, the road improvements will be included in that consideration?
Right. They've made a formal commitment to basically do what's shown on this sheet. Okay. So as we mentioned the last meeting, we can't require them to do any offsite improvements. They can include it as part of their proposal. So this is what is included in part of their proposal right now. So Wayne County, as part of their review, has actually wanting them to lengthen this right turn lane further north, going past the existing commercial driveway, and the county feels that they also should add a right turn D cell lane onto the north Commercial Drive on the north side of Sam's Club to allow for turning movements. That's something they're still in discussions with the county on, and to find out what, you know, those issues are warranted. Our traffic consultant, Wade Trim, felt that the, this improvement as shown will take care of the traffic impacts. The warrants for the other items are met, and it's up to the county whether or not they want to require the county to do them. Because if they don't do them, the county will be obligated to do them at some point in the future. So that's a point of negotiation between them and the county as part of their driveway permits and their outside agency permitting. So the only thing before you tonight for consideration is this right lane improvement as shown on this sheet. So anything else would be a county requirement at that point. So they'll have to make a determination of whether or not they're going to make a commitment with the county to do those improvements once they finish negotiation with the county. So sometime between now and the township board, we'll have a better idea of what the full improvement, you know, will look like.
So what we do tonight is still contingent upon the county? Because the county still has to pass approval.
Well, yeah. I guess at some point, if the county, you know, makes requirements that they can't meet, you know, then they're not going to do them, and the project goes nowhere, obviously. So that's why, right now, we feel comfortable with the commitment that they're making with this improvement to satisfy our conditions for special land use.
Okay. And will MDOT have to pass approval as well? Because it's going into the MDOT right of way?
Hello?
Hello.
Yes, MDOT will be, have to pass approval as well for the improvements at Ford and Lotz Road, because one of the signal poles is being obviously relocated, and then the radius is going to go into the right of way for MDOT. MDOT, when they reviewed the initial traffic study, agreed with the idea of the turn lane and the signal. So it's just a matter of doing technical documents and making the submittals for the permitting process itself.
Okay.
So that includes redoing the entire pedestrian crossing. It includes moving a signal pole. It includes doing a lot of work at the intersection. It includes removing DDA lights along the road. There won't be any room to put the lights between the sidewalk and the curb when they put the lane in. So there's quite a bit of redesign that has to occur within that limited right of way to get that turn lane in.
Okay. No anticipated effect on the south side of the intersection?
No.
Okay. Anyone from the commission? We're just going to open it up. Go ahead, Anne Marie.
Sorry, I'm sitting so far from everybody. I have a cold, so I'm taking care of all of you.
We appreciate that.
Well, actually, if you wouldn't mind, because new information has been put in this packet. And is it okay if we go over some of that?
Sure.
Okay.
What do we need?
So a couple of things. One of them is, first of all, I have veterans in my family that use the veterans facility, so I understand the importance. I really do. But we also have to look at the overall impact to the community. So that's what we're discussing here, and that's what's important. So what you're saying, Jeff, is basically, this is what the county says we have to have, and we know how, if we approve it, the county takes their time if we wait.
Well, I think they're trying to get that resolved in the next week or so with Wayne County. So before we go to the township board for a final approval of the special land use, we'll know exactly what the county is requiring. But your decision tonight will be based on their commitment to do this, and whether you feel that is sufficient. We know that the county is going to still do their technical review and require whatever they're going to require. Okay?
Did the county include, there's a statement in here saying that there's no way to understand the emergency traffic, emergency route impacts. Not sure how this can be analyzed, since emergency vehicles vary and are not consistent. We do know that. However, we have historical data that shows when that train is there, we've had to call in Westland or other cities to take care of some emergency routes. So was that considered?
Well, I think Mandy can address that. Since they're resolving their traffic impact, it's going to be no worse than it is now. So obviously, you know, we can't make, we can't put all of that on that. If there's an issue right now with emergency response because of the train, you know, that's an issue that's going to be ongoing no matter what happens.
Right. But was that included in the analysis? Because we do have data.
Well, they responded to it.
Present. We've done a traffic study using peak hour traffic counts, which is the highest count that we can encounter. There's no way, because of the emergent nature of emergency traffic, that it can be calculated into a traffic count other than using historical data. So we've used all the data available to us, and it's included in the outcome of that report.
Historical data? You did?
They've used all the data available to them to create that report.
Got that from our public safety group? I just want to get a straight answer here. You got that from our public safety group, right?
The historical data?
Yes.
Where did you get the historical data?
For the traffic impact study, we look at the peak hour. If an emergency action happened during the count, that would have been accounted in that count at that time. It's very difficult to analyze with historical data how an emergency is going to impact something. And what we can tell you is, right now, for example, on the PM peak hour, by adding that turn lane as shown on your exhibit, it would take the queuing, just for example, on that southbound lane, from 892 feet with the developed site, and right now it's 808 currently, so it's only going to add 90 feet if we did nothing, down to 115 feet on the through lane and 98 feet on the turn lane. So that tells you, right there, I mean, your stacking currently is over 800 feet. It's going to be down below 120 feet on those two lanes.
So I think-
So it's going to improve any emergencies that are occurring. And we can't design or mitigate anything any better than adding the turn lane in order to reduce that queuing, the timing delays, and improve the situation from a level of service F to a level of service D.
Okay. Right. F is fail, which we see with the traffic impact as it is. Right. Can't get any worse. However, I do, we've had issues there. You also have, so are you going to pay for the traffic lane, then?
Headed to doing the improvements, as Jeff outlined them, which was building the right turn onto Ford Road. That's our commitment.
Going to do that. Okay. Then MDOT also says here, I mean, they're kind of iffy here. They talk about, they agree with the signal timing changes, only they ask for more information also.
Yep. And we will be able to provide more information to MDOT during the technical permitting. They wanted to make sure there was enough geometric room there to install the turn lane and to make everything work. And again, until we get more additional survey, do the detailed design, you know, we'll provide that all for a permit when it comes to permitting that turn lane.
Okay. Now, you also had some alternatives here. Why, other things you chose. You looked at, you know, purchasing land, but the land you'd looked to purchase elsewhere was in Ann Arbor rather than here. Why is that? Why did you look at, because we have a lot of land in Canton, south of here, and VA hospitals on Michigan, you know, you go down Michigan to Gettys, and it's there. But you, your only alternative for purchasing additional land was only in Ann Arbor. Why didn't you look at Canton?
We worked within the VA's delineated area, which is congressionally approved, an area in which the project must be located. And we selected the most advantageous location to serve the veterans of this area with its proximity to interstate and other roadway access, as well as other ancillary services and businesses. And we determined this to be the best location for the veterans of Canton.
So why, I'm just wondering, on Michigan Avenue, you're close to 275, and you're just down-
This is a better location.
Why is that? I just wondered what the reasons is. That was-
As I just described, with its access to major roadways and the surrounding services in the area.
Okay. Because what you said, I think, is the same for down there. Another question-
And we politely disagree.
Another question. What is your tree impact? What is, in terms of, I mean, we're trying to fast track this. So why is that? Why are we trying to push this through quickly? Obviously, there's construction time, but what is the impact of removing all those trees?
We're going to remove somewhere between four to five acres of trees on an otherwise 20-acre wooded site, mostly wooded site. So we have designed the project to minimize that tree impact, where the majority of the trees on this 20-acre property will be left intact.
Okay. Did you do a tree impact study at all in terms of, I mean, because we know we have a lot of animals in that area. Was that included at all?
Yes.
So I'm Brandon Davis with LS Black. So yes, as part of the permitting process for Canton, you do have to do a tree study, and that tree study has been completed by Manix Smith. And we also understand that there is a, we have to purchase a number of trees as well to replace the trees that are there. In some cases, I believe we have to purchase three trees to replace one, and in some cases, it's a one-to-one ratio. But yes, the tree study was done, and we're committed to paying to the fund for the tree replacement as well.
Was there any other impact? Obviously, tree replacement for certain trees, but was there impact to the animals or anything there, other than, when you did your study? You just looked at the number of trees?
So the site would have included during the proposal phase, a Phase 1 study for the site, and it would also take into account, we are currently working at the moment to, we did a, was it ecological survey?
That's correct.
Yeah. To understand if there are any endangered species, or if it's a habitat, et cetera, et cetera. And we're working with US Fish and Wildlife now on any concerns that they may have.
That's not complete, then? That study with the US Wildlife, then?
At the moment, what is required is that we do a, if we wish to remove trees after the end of March, we will have to, and maybe you can speak to this better than I can, Mike, in essence, there would be another study.
Yeah. Mike, shock, LS Black. There are a few studies that you can perform, acoustical and a net survey. I think those are really the only two. Each are prescribed by the US Fish and Wildlife.
What are, you're saying, we're not complete? Have you found anything so far? In the studies?
Do you want to explain the bat habitat issue to her?
Uh, sure.
I mean, that's the issue you're dealing with in terms of tree removal, I think, is the constraint.
Right. Yes. So bats become a problem after Brandon had mentioned the April 1st date.
Get a little closer to the mic.
Close to the mic, yeah. Sorry. A little nervous.
Oh, please don't be.
Yeah, no, I get it. So, yeah, bats only become an issue after the April 1st date. That's our deadline, as prescribed by the US Fish and Wildlife. There are several alternatives to cutting trees after that, to include an acoustical study to measure the sounds produced by bats in the area, to determine if there's, I guess, bats in the area, as well as a net study that is conducted by a biologist. And if they capture any specific species that are, I guess, indicated on the endangered species list, then there would be additional steps that we'd have to take.
I think to answer your question in short, is that we're working with Eagle and with Fish and Wildlife, US Fish and Wildlife, on a permit that may include a survey of the trees. It has been determined that it has the potential for being a roosting area for these bats. So that's ongoing. But I will say, that's the only endangered species that was identified for the site.
Timing for them to get back with you.
Well, that's what Mike was alluding to. We are needful of concluding this survey, this study, and this work prior to the end of March, at which time that roosting, that potential roosting area would become potentially active, to borrow a term. So the removal of the trees would need to take place before the end of March. So all this, as far as the tree cutting permit, we need to do in that timeframe.
Okay. I do have to say something here. I'm asking you guys not to talk around. If you're asked a question, please answer it. I mean, you know, Jeff had to bring up the bats, and you guys knew about that. That's really important. Jeff, is this, this is approved by Wayne County, or is this a proposal?
No, this is what they've proposed, and our traffic consultant reviewed this and determined it to meet by study the minimum requirements to mitigate their impact. Wayne County will determine what the actual improvement will look like. The lane, the length of the lane, the length of the taper, they will also address the right turn lane into the north Commercial driveway, and whether or not they have to increase the taper or include a right-hand turn lane. That's what I'm saying. This is, right now, the only thing they've committed to. So they will have to make a decision, once Wayne County makes a determination of what the full improvement's going to be, whether or not they move forward or not. So that's why I'm saying, between now and the time it goes to the board, we should know exactly what Wayne County requires. A lot of time, we don't know exactly what Wayne County requires until Wayne County issues the permit. Because they're fast-tracking this, they're trying to do everything at the same time. So we're satisfied from staff level and from our traffic consultant standpoint that this is the requirement, but it may be more. This is the minimum that is acceptable, you know, to us from a technical standpoint in mitigating the traffic. That doesn't necessarily meet all of the warrant issues with Wayne County.
Do I actually like your, you have a recommendation here? There's several recommendations, a community planner's recommendation, that's my opinion, subject to Wayne County approval of the proposed right turn lane in addition to Lotz Road, as proposed by the sponsor. And we might even look at the timing of adding this impact, the bat habitat impact.
Right. I mean, this is going to be a practical issue from their standpoint. The bat habitat issue, right now, they're at special land use stage. They've submitted their site plans for review, so they're going to try to get on the next planning commission meeting for site plan. First of all, they've got to get through the township board on February 25th, if you make a recommendation tonight to move this forward. So then, potentially, you would see the site, you know, the formal site plan, you know, the actual detailed plan at your March 2nd meeting. So that's not going to go to the township board until the 4th Tuesday in March. That only gives them a week to clear trees after they, and that's, I will only issue a clearing permit once they have their utility permits and are ready to go on the site. So they're really in a crunch time here to get all of the approvals in place, and, you know, in order to start clearing trees. Because we will not issue a tree, we will review the tree removal permit, but we will not issue it until their pre-construction meeting for water and sewer occurs. So that's part of the, their timing, is they've got to get through all of this other design work. So they're working kind of concurrently with all of the other pieces, knowing that we have to get through this stage and through a couple other stages. So we don't know what will happen. Obviously, we don't control removal, we don't control removal of bat habitat. All we do is issue the tree removal, or not issue the tree removal permit. If they have bat habitat, they're going to be restricted from when they can remove trees by US Fish and Wildlife pursuant to their environmental permits. So.
Okay. Well, I still like your recommendation.
That's-
I'm all set. The little cut that we got here, some verbiage on here, I don't know if this is an error or not. It says township will not require ADA light poles. Should that be DDA light poles?
Yes, DDA light poles.
Okay.
I wondered about that, too.
And then my question is, why not? If they have to take them out in order to-
There won't be any place to put them.
Make these changes?
You'll have sidewalk, and you'll have road. There will be no area between the sidewalk and the road. There's not enough right of way. Right now, we have three or four decorative poles in the green space in between the sidewalk and the curb of Lotz Road. If we put a lane there, just like we do on the north side of, on Ford Road at Sheldon, there's no right of way. We don't have DDA lights on the south side of Ford, you know, west of Sheldon, because there's not right of way available to put them. So in certain areas, because you've got right turn lanes, it restricts your-
There's DDA lights over there.
No, there are not between, there are not, there's one on the corner. There's no, there's no DDA lights in front of the Mexican restaurant on the southwest corner, Sheldon and Ford, because you have a right turn lane there, and there's no area between the sidewalk and the curb to put them. We worked with Canton, we worked with Canton Place Residence Hall to put DDA lights in as entrances, so we can kind of continue the DDA lights down the road, but they use them as entry lights. But there's no lights in between there and Sheldon Road, except the one directly on the corner. So in certain areas, especially on the north-south county roads where we've got turn lanes, you know, that's just going to be one of those things that, you know, we're going to have to live with. I mean, at some point in time, the county was going to have to come in and put a turn lane in there to resolve traffic. At that point in time, whether it's them doing it, or whether the county does it five or six years from now, those lights are going to have to be moved. The only way we could replace them would be putting them on private property. There's just no place in the road to put them. It's only an 86-foot right of way, and we're trying to get a five-lane cross section in there. So that's not a whole lot of right of way in the cross section. So unfortunately, you know, we'll have to look at the final design and see whether there's an option of relocating them. But we would have to then, the DDA would potentially have to get an easement from the property owner adjacent to the shopping center owner to put them, you know, in front of, between the sidewalk and the wall. And I don't know what purpose that serves at that point.
I think we should at least consult the DDA about that. I mean, that should be part of this whole endeavor, is to do that, not just make a blanket decision, because maybe the DDA wants to do that.
Well, I'm not making a decision. It's in the county right of way. If the county issues a permit to do a lane improvement, they're gone. It's not our decision. It's the county's decision. If, once they issue a permit to do the road improvement, Greg, they're gone. It's the county right of way. It's not our choice. The county's given us permission to put the lights there because there was room to put them there.
Correct.
So they can take that permission away and say, you're going to do a road improvement there instead of putting lights there. So that's just, unfortunately, because of the width of the right of way, there's just, you know, we have got lights on the other side of the road. We're just not going to have lights, you know, on that side of Lotz Road unless we can come up with another option. And, you know, we'll look at that when we get further down the design process.
Also, we're talking about narrowing the sidewalks there from eight feet to five feet?
Well, normally, we only have five-foot wide sidewalks. I think when the shopping center was done, because the DDA was going towards eight-foot sidewalks, we required them to put an eight-foot sidewalk in, but they could reduce it to five. The county says it needs to be reduced to six if it's adjacent to the curb. So instead of leaving a foot space in between the curb and the sidewalk that can't be maintained, you know, at this point, until we see a final design, we can look at what the sidewalk will look like in conjunction with the ADA ramps.
So the narrowing will just be in the area corresponding to the additional lane, or will they redo the entire sidewalk to the five feet with-
They're going to have to, they're probably going to have to eat into it, depending on what the final, you know, if they can get it in and not move the sidewalk and have the curb above the sidewalk, you know, then you're still going to have an eight-foot wide sidewalk. But I expect, when the final engineering is done, is that the sidewalk is going to shift a little bit.
Okay. And in this project, I think we established that only a certain part of it is fronting Lotz Road, so they don't have to supply sidewalk anywhere but in that small area? Or were they going to take the sidewalk from Walmart all the way north to their project?
I don't think they have any frontage that's not Walmart's frontage. Right now, they're using Walmart's driveway. So they don't have the frontage unless you go way up north in the north piece, if you look at the plan. And there's no sidewalk up there to connect to.
Mr. Goulet is correct. We access Lotz Road, the easement across property owned by Walmart.
Yeah. I think what you're saying is, is where your Lotz Road frontage is further north, where your actual frontage is, Derek? Where your, if you look at the plan, I think what he's talking about is that area further north where you do have frontage on Lotz Road, whether you'd be proposing to put sidewalk in there. Right now, there's no sidewalk along that side of the road, all the way up and down.
I can't see, I can't see what serve, what purpose that would serve.
I know. Technically, by code, you have to put a sidewalk in on your frontage. Okay. So when they come back for-
If it were required, then-
Right. Right. When they come back for site plan, if there's no sidewalk to the north and the south, and there's, we're not going to have a sidewalk there for a long time, north or south, we'll have to determine whether or not, you know, the planning commission wants to weigh the sidewalk in that particular location. So, right now-
Well, I'm thinking about pedestrians in that area. It was brought up in our last meeting about, you know, we still have houses along there, and so I'm thinking about, well, if we can get people off the road onto sidewalks, we're going to make it safer. And so that's my concern.
We'll bring, you know, if you look at the bigger aerial, you can see how it actually functions. So the need for the sidewalk, if we had a need for a sidewalk, Greg, would it be on the west side, not the east side? We've only got a couple houses on the east side. So we would want to put sidewalk on the other side, not on their side, because you've got a junkyard to the north and just a couple houses to the south, you know, on the east side. Well, we can talk about it when we bring the site plan back. So.
Will this change bring about any kind of, any speed changes, or anything else that would affect traffic in there that you anticipate? Any, anything along those lines?
What do you mean? Well, I'm not, I'm not sure. I didn't understand your question.
Because, because we're slightly increasing traffic, is there going to be any speed changes made because of that?
You know, in terms of speed limit?
Speed limit, yeah.
That's up to the state, that's up to the state, pleased to determine speeds.
The widening won't do that, right? And the, the left-hand turn is already a dedicated left-hand turn going south onto Ford, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else have any questions, concerns, anything?
I just wanted to say thank you for committing on that corner improvement. Obviously, that's what we were, our major concern was last, last meeting. So appreciate it. It's going to be a nice facility.
I can tell you, it's difficult, not knowing the expense of it. It comes a bit at the expense of our budget for the veteran project. So again, we don't do it very easily, as I'm sure the township government- So again, we don't do it very easily, as I'm sure the township government wouldn't make such commitments for things of which it doesn't know what the costs are going to be. But we appreciate your gesture. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And hope you don't feel we're beating up on you or anything like that with all our questions.
That's their job, not the intent.
Do I hear a motion or more comments, anything at all from the commission?
I move to recommend approval for the request, I move to recommend approval for the request for special land use for a medical clinic on parcel number 048-99-0022-701, as the proposal meets the general criteria for special land use, subject to approval of the addition of the proposed right turn lane on southbound Lots Road, north of Ford Road, by Wayne County.
Second.
All right. We've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Ocon. Any further discussion from the commission?
No.
Commissioner Zuber, will you call the vote, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Eickenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Ocon?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes. And Chairman Green?
Yes. And so the next step would be the township trustees?
Yeah, this will be transmitted to the township trustees. Hopefully, we'll have more information from Wayne County on what the exact improvement's going to be for Lots Road, but, you know, that's, it's part of the outside agency permitting process, anyway.
Okay. And thank you so much for coming up to us with this. And for all of you veterans in the audience, thank you for your service. Appreciate it.
And on behalf, on behalf of the VA and the veterans they serve, thank you.
I'll wait for the room to clear a little bit. Okay. We have some business to refer to staff. Residence Inn and Hilton Garden Inn, HDDS, Canton Phase Two, and Fillmore Place. Do I hear a motion to send that to staff?
So moved. Support.
Thank you. We might as well be consistent tonight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Anything from staff?
No, we just need, February every year is the month we normally re-elect officers. Currently, Mr. Green is the chair. Don, you're the vice chair, and.
I'm the secretary.
Secretary, and who's?
Craig is the vice.
Craig is the vice chair.
Craig Engels is the vice chair. Okay. So you want to make any changes? Do you want to move existing officers?
Julio was vying for the chair.
Mm-mm. Oh, no. Is there a term limit thing?
Is Greg term limited?
No, there's no term limit. I move that we keep everything the same.
Support.
All right.[1741.15]